Good evening, everybody. I have from the Governor, J. Kevin Stitt, a commendation to read. In resolve, this Governor's commendation is hereby presented to Emergency Management of Muskogee County. For your unwavering dedication and exceptional service to the citizens of Oklahoma during times of disaster, through countless hours of hard work and determination, you have provided critical assistance to families and communities in need, often under the most difficult conditions. Tyler Evans, Kelly Bolding, and Carrie Wages exemplify true public service through their leadership, compassion, and steadfast commitment to helping others rebuild and recover. Thank you for your enduring support, perseverance, and devotion to protecting and serving Oklahomas and Oklahomans when they need it most. Signed, Kevin Stitt, Governor of Oklahoma. And if any of you remember The Last Great Blood, please focus. You did a great job, worked hard on that. Okay, we've got a special recognition tonight. Recognition. Whereas the Muskogee High School One Act Team presented A Voice in the Dark, a Salem story, on October 30th, 2025. And whereas the team earned the title of state runner-up to the 6A State One Act Competition held at East Central University of Ada. Whereas the team qualified for state by placing in the top three at the Broken Arrow Regional Contest on October 14th. And whereas students Elizabeth Van Post and Eden Dennis were named to the All-State Cast. And Elizabeth Van Post was additionally named to the All-Region Cast alongside Austin Torix. And whereas the following cast members contributed to the team's success. Eden Dennis, Sidney Lane, Elizabeth Van Post, Austin Torix, Isaac Brown, Kristen Campbell, Tucker Smith, Ryland Williams, Adelaide Rutherford, Kyler Lemon, Beth Brown, Keaton Davis, Scarlett Perry, Zoe Long, Baylen Vitacock, Pravitakak, Shay Sargent, and Parks Johnsey. And whereas the production was supported by the leadership and direction of Patrick Kays, Connor Lynch, Penny McGill, and Jamie Shanks, with Judah Sheldon serving as student and tech director and Brighton Davis as stage manager. And whereas the achievements of these students reflect positively on Muskogee High School, Muskogee Public Schools, and the entire Muskogee community through their dedication, talent, teamwork, and excellence in the performing arts. Now therefore, I, Patrick Cale, Mayor of the City of Muskogee, do hereby recognize and commend the Muskogee High School One Act Team for their outstanding accomplishments at the 6A State One Act Competition and their continued representation of Muskogee with pride, leadership, and artistic resilience. Excellence. Thank you, everybody. Good job. All right, now these youngsters. If I messed up on anybody's name, you come up here, kick me in the leg.
He's really got a cup for it.
If they're gonna hold back, you hold back, okay? Welcome, everyone, to tonight's City Council, November 24th, 2025. First, we'll have our invocation by Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor.
Dear Lord, once again, we just come giving you glory and praise for another day. And during this Thanksgiving season, we come to give you thanks for not only things you've done for us today, but the things that you've done for us all year and all our lives. We just ask that you would just look upon us tonight as we come together as your city leaders. We have decisions to make, and we want to make sure that we make the things that are pleasing in your sight. And these are many other blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Next, we'll have the flag salute. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Oklahoma pledge. I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It symbols a peace unite all people.
Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
We've got Ms. Shirley Hilton is not feeling well tonight. Could I have a motion to excuse her?
So moved.
Second.
May we have a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall. Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. Does anybody have any observations or corrections?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Next, we've got the consent agenda, items one through seven. Does anyone have anything they want to add or pull out of that? Or relook?
Move for approval as presented.
Second.
May we have a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Regular agenda items. Number eight, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4279A, a request for street closure for property located at Owen Street and Boston Avenue to allow for new construction, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we will now open a public hearing. Ms. Sarah Winkle.
Yes, good evening. And this applicant is requesting that the street be closed to make way for construction of the new Bass Reeves Memorial Public Safety Complex that's going to be constructed on this site. This went to subdivision review committee on October the 14th and was approved with the conditions that the utilities could be rerouted. And being in talks with all of the utility companies involved, this can be done before construction begins, and we do recommend approval of this ordinance. I can answer any questions that you guys might have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If there's no questions or statements, we'll now close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number nine, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of Resolution Number 3063, a land use amendment for the property located at 601 North C Street to allow a rezone of the property from C1 Local Commercial and C2 General Commercial to C2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Ms. Winkle.
Thank you. And the applicant on this has requested a rezon of this property currently located at 601 North C. And as of right now, it does not conform to the 2025 Muskogee Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map, which is the reason for the request for the land use amendment. This property is going to be used to, for commercial purposes, and so we do recommend approval of the resolution to allow for the land use amendment, and I can answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions or comments? If not, we'll now close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number 10, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4280A, a rezon request for the property located at 601 North C Street, rezoning the property from C1 Local Commercial and C2 General Commercial to C2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
We are now in a public hearing. Ms. Winkle, please.
Yes, thank you. And so this is part two. And this is the rezon request for that same piece of property and to make it to where it is all uniformed zoned so that they can have one zoning instead of a split zone. The two lots have been consolidated, so it is one lot that we are requesting to be zoned. And we do recommend approval.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments, we will now close the public hearing.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 11, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4282A, a request to rezon the property located at 2807 Court Street, rezoning the property from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two-Family Residential, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Ms. Winkle.
The applicant on this one has requested to rezon the property from R1 Single Family to R2 Two-Family Residential. The proposed use of this property is to be for residential use. The request does conform to the future land use map, and so we are recommending approval on this, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Are they gonna make a duplex out of this, or are they gonna tear it down and build a new one?
And they are looking to turn this into a two-family zoned property and for a duplex, and if that does not work out, then they can still put a single family home on the property.
If nothing else, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 12, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of the preliminary and final plat for Roadhouse Edition located at 2914 West Shawnee, consisting of 2.59 acres, or take other necessary action.
We now have an open public meeting. Sarah, please.
Yes, thank you. And I would like to note that there was a scripter's error on the acreage, and it should be listed as 2.48 acres as per the final plat.
Thank you.
Okay. This application was submitted by Cook and Associates Engineering and indicated that the property is being platted in preparation for new, for a new commercial restaurant to be placed on this property. Both the preliminary and the final plat went to subdivision review committee on November the 3rd. The preliminary plat and the final plat both comply with the requirements of the subdivision regulations and were approved. The site plan also was looked at on November the 3rd and was approved in that same meeting. Staff does recommend approval, and we can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments?
Just a good day. It's a good recipe.
If none, we'll close the public hearing.
I move for approval as amended to the 2.4 acre, 4.8 acres.
Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 13, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3065, a resolution to declare bridge inspection responsibility by local governments for compliance with national bridge inspection standards, providing for a selection process for an engineer and a contract duration beginning April 1, 2026, and ending March 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigney.
Yes, thank you. So we have a number of bridges in the city. These bridges require a inspection on, some are on a six-month basis, some are on a year basis, and some are on a two-year basis. So we have some options for what we can do. You can select from a pre-selected group of engineers. You can interview your own engineers, or you can let ODOT decide who your engineer's gonna be. Historically, historically, we've let ODOT decide who our engineer is going to be for those inspections. We would like to choose to opt that again as it's reflected in that resolution, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
How many bridges do we have that we need, that are, you think need to be repaired right now?
So that's a, that's a tricky question. If it's, if it's, there's different levels of repair. They all need general maintenance on them, but we don't have any that have been deemed you need to repair today.
I remember when I was on four years ago, or six years ago now, that there was several bridges that were in dire DFL, and I didn't know if we ever got those fixed, or something like the one out there on Goulet, right there by, what is it? Prayview.
Yeah. So we, we have done mitigation to those to make sure that they are up to date on their inspections, and that's why we have the inspections, to make sure we stay up on those.
It's crazy how my memory works.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Geez. Now roll call, please.
Hi, hold on. Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 14, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3066, amending the City of Muskogee Municipal Budget for Fiscal Year 2025-2026, providing for the transfer of excess general fund revenue from Fiscal Year 2024-2025 into a stabilization account and special project fund in accordance with City Code 2-552. Excuse me, I lost my place. Providing for the increase of the general fund budget, providing for the transfer to the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, or take other necessary action.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. In front of you, you should have a detailed list of all the items that we are requesting in this year's midyear budget amendment. We have previously discussed them. Happy to answer any questions, and staff does recommend approval.
Do we have a slide so the public can go through, know what we're doing on those items that were announced?
I do not have a slide.
Can we go through those items so the public knows what?
Yes. Do you want me to go through just each special projects list? Is that what you want me to go through? Or just each?
Yeah, just so they know what we're, what we're, what monies we're transferring around.
Okay. In accordance with our midyear budget amendment, we are going to be moving prior year monies. Let me get my indexes out, sorry. This year, the transfer to the stabilization account will be in the amount of $760,112.44. That is to continue to build up our reserve fund in alliance with our ordinance. The amount transferring to special projects this year is $1,167,462.82. In front of you, you should have the detailed list of items. You have, go ahead and go through each item.
Yes, please.
Okay. The first item is a debt service transfer to the MRA to cover interest on one of the notes held within the MRA in the amount of $468,298.91. The next item is for professional services in the amount of $40,000. Mainly that's for our strategic plan that we are currently working on. We have a URA street project over in the Tiff District that we're doing some road repair on. That's for $115,000. We have some general facilities, grounds, and maintenance in the amount of $200,939.91. We are going to purchase some coenforcements and give them some vests for $10,000. We're going to provide a Hatbox Sports Complex with $50,000. We are providing employees, staff with a stipend of $500 each. That is gross. That total is $172,500. We are going to provide the police department with a drone program for $15,000. The fire department needs some facilities money in the amount of $8,000. We're going to provide the fire department with a smoke machine for their training facility in the amount of $1,200. We're going to purchase the emergency management, a water wagon, in the amount of $13,524. We're going to provide $10,000 for our backflow prevention program, which is a program the city currently has. For Fire Station Number Five, we got $48,000. That is for when the fire station over on York Street gets tore down. That's money for, for temporary housing of the fire department. And at last, we got the C-Hall boilers for $15,000. That needs some inspection and repairs.
And then just to clarify, the Hatbox Sports Complex funds that will be used for the, like baseball and softball fields, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Dennis.
Any questions or comments?
We still have the exhibits.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we are going to increase the general fund in the amount of $477,985. That is to cover raises that were given to the unions. We've got $200,000 that we're going to increase in our grant match funds. This year, we didn't have any, but right now, we're able to infuse $200,000 into our grant match fund. And then this part is the the transfer to the, oh, sorry. We are going to be transferring $6,198,800 from the general fund reserves to the MRA. That is to pay off note and accrued interest on the current note that the MRA holds. I think that's.
And then the CIP.
Ah, geez. Sorry. So yes, this year, the new 2025 CIP fund was, that CIP passed, so we are starting that fund out. That will be, of course, that's just a sales tax revenue projection of $2,180,456. The first two projects that are going to be included are the library remodels. $680,456. That's not the total amount that the library was going to be given, but that's all that we have within this budget capacity for this year. And then $1.5 million for the Civic Center payback.
Thank you.
Dennis, can you do me a quick summary? We, we arrive at this point every year, the midyear budget. Can you explain that? How we got to the point of making these amendments out? I want it appear that we just moving money around.
Yeah. So after the first three months of the new fiscal year, we close out the prior fiscal year. Any excess revenue over expense from the prior year, we have a stabilization calculation where we try to keep our reserves at at least, of course, 20%. We're trying to achieve 30%. I think we are currently with this will take us to 22.5%. So we use that calculation. So this is, in previous discussions, we always said that, you know, we get to have a, you know, we do a budget amendment, you know, once a year. A lot of places don't get to do that. So we, when we figure up that calculation number, we move that certain amount into reserves, and that allows us to create that special projects fund, which was the big list that I went over. And then, of course, we try to plug in some needs that maybe we're not able to fund with the initial budget.
Thank you.
Dennis, thank you very much.
Number 15, please. We got it. Let's get a spot on that, everybody.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Abstain.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 15, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3069, directing the filing and notification of the publication of Supplement Number 26 to the Muskogee City Code of Ordnances, or take other necessary action. Mayor and Council, this is a yearly housekeeping item that is required by Section 14-110, Title 11 of Oklahoma statutes. This resolution will formally adopt all the resolutions and ordinances that have been passed by council through September 30 of 2025. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Need for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 16, please.
Receive report, discuss, and consider approval to accept the fiscal year 2023-2024 audit performed by Hood and Associates, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Dennis Reed.
Yes, we have Violet Kurgandahl with Hood CPAs here to discuss that audit and answer any good questions.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hope everyone is doing good. And I think everybody received a copy of the audit previous to tonight, so I'm gonna just go through the report on areas that I feel are important to communicate, and this is a.
And this is a hundred and eight-page report, so I want to not hold you up longer on your agenda for tonight. So we're going to start on page one of the report, which is the independent auditor's report. And again, this is for your audit for the City of Muskogee for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. In our opinion, your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects as of that date. And we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards, generally accepted, and government auditing standards. And then we're going to go over to the financial statements, which start on page thirteen. And this is what we call a statement of net position. And this is what we call a government-wide financial statement presentation, meaning that it's all funds that are held with the city and proprietary funds and governmental funds that are as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And as of, total assets as of that date was four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-two, four hundred and ninety-seven million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. We had total liabilities, two hundred and twenty-five million, two hundred and forty-four thousand. And then we had, that makes your net position or net equity overall of two hundred and seventy-eight million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand. So we're going to go to page fourteen, which is very micro-print and hard to read. But we're going to, this is a statement of activities, and it's basically an income statement, but it starts with the expenses, reporting the expenses first. And it starts with the total primary government, which is all citywide, in the first column there. Total expenditures were seventy-eight million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, four ninety-eight. And then you're going to work to the right, and that applies the program revenues to those actual departments and activities, which were fifty-three million, six hundred, sixty-four thousand of revenues towards those programs. And then we're going to drop down to the next section where it says general revenues, and it says total general revenues citywide were forty-eight million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand. So we had a total change in net position or a net income citywide was twenty-two million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Page fifteen starts your next set of financial statements, and this is what we call the fund financial statements. And this is for the city funds only, including the general fund and all special revenue funds. And total assets on this report was seventy million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand. We had total liabilities, sixteen million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand. We had unavailable revenue of five million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, and that makes your total fund balances forty-nine million, ninety thousand. The next page, page sixteen, is a reconciliation of this financial statement to the first set of financial statements on the government-wide for, for showing what the differences are. Basically, this, the differences in these assets and the first assets for government are capital assets and debt for notes payable and compensated absences. So that reconciles the two together if you want to follow that through. On page seventeen, this is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in the fund balances for the governmental funds. And total revenues were fifty-five million, four hundred and sixteen thousand. We had total expenditures of eighty thousand, six seventy-five. And then we had total other financing sources of eighteen thousand, eighty-nine, which were transfers in and out, a net of that. So we had a total net and change fund balances for the city funds of negative seven mil, seven million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand for fiscal year twenty-four. Page nineteen starts the statement of net position for proprietary funds, which is your business-type activities, including the municipal authority, the foundation, and some other smaller enterprise funds. So total assets for fiscal year twenty-four was three hundred and fifty million, five hundred and fifty-six. We had total liabilities, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty. And we had total net position, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one ninety-five. Page twenty is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in your fund net position for the proprietary funds. We had total operating revenues overall of forty-two million, fifty-seven thousand. We had total operating expenses, ten million, five hundred and ninety. We had non-operating revenues and expenses a negative of one million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which is where your interest income and interest expense comes in. And then we had a change in net position this year was a net income of ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. So on page twenty-one is a third financial statement that's presented for proprietary funds. And this is a statement of cash flows. And operating activities provided thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two thousand. And in cap, non-capital and financing activities, we used eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And then capital-related financing activity where we purchased capital assets and paid on your capital debt. We had an inflow of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand in cash. And we had investing activities where we used four million, eight hundred and sixty-three. So overall, your cash in your proprietary fund balances increased seventy-seven thousand, seventy-four dollars. So we're going to go over to page twenty-three, which starts the notes to the financial statements. And the beginning of the notes is basically your accounting policies that have been adopted over the years. They did not have any changes this year. So we're going to go over to page thirty-eight to where the notes do have some actual changes for the year. In the top of page thirty-eight, on the proprietary fund financial statements, you'll see a big amount of called restricted assets, cash and investments. That's eighty-six million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. And that's basically to have to do with all your construction debt that you have that we have in trustee accounts. Accounts receivable as of June thirtieth, we had, government funds had five million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, and business-type activities had two million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We had some notes receivable and lease receivables as of June thirtieth that are included on the financial statements. And then we're going to go to page thirty-nine, capital assets. And on that government-wide financial statement, capital assets for governmental activities were eighty-five million, one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-four in net book value. That's your cost left through depreciation as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Business-type activities had a net book value of a hundred and four thousand, seven ninety-eight. On page forty-one, as a long-term debt, we had governmental activities, long-term debt. We had twenty-one million, seventy-nine thousand, and that's detailed there on that schedule. And on page forty-three, we had the business-type activity total long-term debt was a hundred and forty-five thousand, two fifty-three. The top of page forty-four shows you your changes in your long-term debt. We had additions for governmental activities, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two forty-nine. We had payments on principal, six million, one hundred and forty-two thousand. To make that ending, twenty-seven million, six oh six. Business-type activities, we had additions or proceeds, eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. And debt payments were four million, six hundred and thirty-six. Down at the bottom is some annual debt service requirements for each government and business-type activities for the next five years. So we're going to go over to page forty-eight. This, this is going to just start some pension disclosures that we are going to kind of skip through because there's a lot of detail in those. We're going to go to page fifty-eight. And shows that we have some commitments and contingencies at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which were some construction commitments. We had some inter-fund transactions and lease agreements as of that date. And then we had some contingencies which have to do with your grant programs and some litigation. The litigation is covered by insurance. There's nothing to disclose as far as any kind of liabilities. So that's, there's no liabilities in the financial statements, but we just have to disclose that they, they exist. So then we're going to go over to page sixty-six, which is a note on your budget and actual for the general fund, which is the only required fund that we have to include with the report. But we had budgeted final revenues of forty-three million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We, we collected forty-four million, one hundred and two thousand. Expenditures, we budgeted thirty-nine million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand. We spent thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one thousand. Then we're going to go over to the next section. The next few pages are, several pages are combining totals, which are included in the reports that we've already talked to about. There's just individual fund activities. So if you wanted to look up a specific fund, you can look on those schedules. Page ninety-five starts another auditor's report that we have to issue over internal control of financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. Part of performing the audit is we look at the internal controls over disbursements and receipts and any kind of financial assets that we have. We have to look at that and test. And then on compliance, we look at compliance with laws and regulations, payroll tax filings, any kind of grant agreements or requirements we have to comply with. And we had a couple of findings on that, which we'll find, we'll look at the bot, the, the ending. They're the same findings that we have every year. Page ninety-seven is a report on compliance for each major program for federal awards that, that we report, we receive for federal grants. We have to conduct what we call a single audit, which is another level, because we go over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to conduct that next level of audit and do some compliance testing on that. So in our opinion, you complied in all material respects with those programs. Page one oh one is a detail of all those federal and state awards. And as of fiscal year twenty-four, we had total expenditures in federal awards was five million, four hundred and three thousand. Over on page one hundred and three starts the step, schedule of findings and question cost. Just as a summary of the auditor's results, the type of opinion that was issued on your financial statements was unmodified, meaning that it was a good, good report. We felt like you had, had nothing that would cause you to be materially misstated in your financial statements. Federal awards, the type of auditor's report, again, was unmodified, meaning that we didn't have anything on our compliance testing that would have caused us to modify our opinion. There are two major federal programs that we identified as major, and those were the ARPA grant and the hazard mitigation grant program. Page one oh four is a schedule of findings and question cost. And again, I mentioned on, we had on internal controls, we had one finding. And this is basically, again, a repetitive finding that we have on the timing delay that we have in conducting the audit. And this is a result of several things that we, mostly it's component unit reporting that we, it causes us a delay in getting the audit done because we can't complete the city audit unless we have the components to include those report, the amounts in that report. Compliance finding is just a follow-up of the, the timing issue because we weren't able to file the twenty-six forty-three with the State of Oklahoma, the State Auditor's Office. And then on the second, or two, two thousand twenty-four dash three, that's on page one oh five, the data collection form is to do with the federal audit, a single audit that we have to file can't be done because the audit is late. So, and again, that's, that's basically the same findings we've had every time. One oh six is the prior year schedule of audit findings. And the only difference between this year and last year was that we had the civic center finding last year that was now been resolved and, and included in the city.
Every year we have a timing issue? Is that, with, there'll be more cities in the Skogee, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So does other cities have timing issues like we do?
Yes, it does, especially if you're, you're dependent on those component units to be able to get you the financial information. You're, you're basically at their will, you know? You have to wait till you get those to get your audit completed, you know? So a lot of people have other reasons for being delayed, you know? But that's mainly yours is because of having to wait. I mean, we could have maybe had this done six months earlier if it would have been not having to wait on those last-minute reports.
I just know that in the past, a lot of our citizens are worried about that because it keeps reoccurring, and they're like, well, fix it, fix it. And we're like, I don't know if we can fix it.
Well, we can't until the component, we, I don't know that there's anything you can enforce on those component units that I know of. But I do know that we, we are, we were two years behind. So now we're just one year behind. So we, we are making headway. It's just a matter of it's, you know, we're still going to, you know, I talked to the CPA just last week about how soon am I going to get fiscal year twenty-five to finish, you know? And, and he said, well, we're waiting on the component units. It's probably going to be February, you know, before I can even start my side of it. So, so it's just a reoccurring problem that we just can't.
So it's not actually the city's fault, it's what we're waiting for?
Yeah, I mean, it, there, there can be some, a little bit of delay on information, but they can't do what they do until we get the close of the next year. So it could be, you know, it's just a, it's a domino effect that continues.
And we think Dennis is doing a great job. So we just, we want to make sure that everybody out there doesn't think it's Dennis's fault.
Right, right, no. No, we, we, he completely complies with all of our requests. But it's, you know, like I said, he can't do things, certain things he can't do and get to the CPA until we get the previous year closed. And so that, it's just a, a constant cycle until we can get caught up on the component units. And like I said, I don't know that there's anything that you can enforce upon them to, to get any quicker, but.
I did want to say also to the citizens that they can find that report on the auditor report on our website. So it is there, so that they can go through that. I just followed through it while you went through it.
It's easy to, to find. Audit reports, there's seventeen documents at the top, and that's all along.
And I appreciate you all hanging with me, going through it. It's a lot to go through, a lot of information, so. Thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Any other?
Can we accept the report?
Yes, sir, we do.
I make a motion that we accept the report, audit report?
Thank you.
We have a motion in it. A second on accepting the report, roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Thank you all, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Seventeen, please.
Receive a presentation from the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame as to the state of their funding, and consider approval of a cooperative agreement between the City of Muskogee and the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the implementation of cultural and tourism development of the great Muskogee community, with a one-time allotment in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for building maintenance, and take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you. This is our annual presentation from the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame. And we do a contract every year where the city helps fund their activities. It's for sixty thousand dollars. And then we're doing a one-time special allotment of fifteen thousand dollars and that's for building maintenance. And we have someone to present from the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame.
Thank you very much. It seems like, pardon me. It seems like the, the phrase that comes to mind for me for our current position of the Hall of Fame has to do with, boy, it's been growing pains this year. We have been out of our building for nine months. We have three months, we think, left to go before we move back into our building. And, and being out of our building, we have missed a lot of things. We've missed our events. We, we haven't had any Saturday night events or weddings or parties or meetings or rotary club meetings. Or we've missed everything because we just didn't have a place. So it's been a tough year, and it's been a quiet year. And we have adjusted our staffing accordingly. We have some, but there's, there's great news on the horizon. As you all know, Mr. Francis was with us. A couple of weeks ago, we did a walkthrough with the Lieutenant Governor, and Jamie Stout was there as well. And we got to see his enthusiasm at the current condition of the building. And he is, he still holds true to the fact that he wants Muskogee, Oklahoma to be the number three tourism spot in the state. And he's pretty serious about it. He says, we're not going to forget you. We're going to stay with you all the way through this thing. There's going to be billboards, there's going to be a lot of public publicity marketing, all of that. So to that end, we're having a meeting next week with some of the state marketing team, advertising team. And we're going to start putting together our plan and really start organizing how we're going to move forward to, to really move this thing up a notch. And so I'll be glad to answer any questions. It's very exciting for us. The outside of the building is, as, as this tourist and all the people that would go by that building, they're just complaining, boy, it's awful. It's so ugly, there's nothing going on. Yes, there is. We've seen the inside of that building. And there is.
The inside says it all.
The inside says a lot. And it's very, very exciting. One small thing that's just fun for all of us, I think, that's involved in the hall, is that, you know, that it's a nineteen oh three building, best we can tell, and the flooring was put in nineteen oh seven. We've told the contractors, don't touch our floor. The floor will remain like it is. So it's, everything in that room is going to be big, and it's going to be nice, and it's going to be clean, and it's going to be pristine and state-of-the-art. But our floor stays old, ugly, tired, hundred-and-fifty-year-old wood. So, but I'll be glad to answer any questions, So but I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I'll be glad to discuss with you how we're looking for the future. Any questions, anything?
Does everything appear to be on schedule?
On schedule, and we're looking forward to the spring of 2026.
We are. And I've gone through the contract, our agreement, our cooperative agreement, and everything that's listed in the agreement, we are currently doing and or about to do as we hit those thresholds and dates. And you'll have, Ms. Tracy, you'll have our list of dates for next year for our meetings and all that, by your deadlines. So we're on track for certainly following through and doing our part.
Fantastic news.
With that, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Item number 18.
Discuss the operations and maintenance, state of affairs, and partnerships with the city to support youth baseball, softball, and soccer at Love Hat Box Sports Complex and take other necessary action.
Good evening. I'm here with my PowerPoint. Real quick, our user groups again for the 2025 and 2026 calendar years. We have had have a list of recent repairs that we've made. I have Keith Titsworth, our Hat Box Sports Manager here as well. So if there's any specific questions related to fields repairs, he's here to help me with that. Field works continued, and we've been very pleased and the Leaks have been very pleased with the field work and the hard work of our staff. We have ongoing repairs and maintenance, and some of these things are general maintenance that is ongoing. Some are just to-do lists that we'll be working on through the off-season and be prepared for spring ball. We have 2026 calendar almost full, so we will be gearing up and ready to hit the ground running in February and March. We're sure. So over 25 tournaments right now that we're securing for the for the year. And this is our list, a kind of wish list, but we think items that are able and with this special projects funding, we'll be able to work with the user groups and decide and prioritize what the needs are and what everyone would like. And that's my report.
Any questions?
I'd be happy to answer.
If not, we have some citizens that would like to come up and speak. Thank you. Just give us your name, and that's all we need.
I'm Sheila Rippey, and I've been with Green Country Girls Softball for, I don't know, 15 years or more, probably. Agree, I agree 100% with Brooke on the stuff that she's been that she posted up there, the things that we've asked for, that they're working on, we're seeing improvement. Mr. Francis has been out there. He's done walkthroughs. He's been a major, major help for us. Several times over the years, I've asked for help. We've asked for help for fixing things, different stuff, and our emails go unanswered. We've reached out to the parks directly. Some emails get answered or we'll look into it, and most of them don't even get answered. Mr. Francis has been a key person in helping getting some response on that. So we're finally getting some things done, and we're pretty excited about that. So I guess I don't really have anything other to say, other than just that, thank you. I told you I would trust you because I've been the negative Nancy, and I've been the person that says, I'm tired of dealing with the city. They're not helping us. They don't listen. They won't answer my emails. He's been key, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
I can tell you that Mr. Francis's response, he will respond, no doubt about it. That's who he is.
I'm Nicole Bowling. I'm treasurer for Muskogee Youth Baseball, baseball coach, soccer coach, and I have to say, thank you guys. We have noticed the improvements. I don't know if you guys know this, but for soccer, daylight savings, they were out there opening up the football fields so we had lights, which was game changer. In the meeting we had, they had mentioned a communications app that we could possibly use because they're have it's a growing pain. I get it. For example, they were repaving the soccer fields while we were having games. We had teams coming from out of town. This is before we had our big meeting, so it's little things. But we need a better way of communication, like Sheila said. So any questions?
No, but we'll.
Thank you.
We'll certainly visit that. Just your name, and that's it, Josh.
Josh Cotton. And I'm up here today to kind of represent two different groups. I'm not sure how that works, but Muskogee Youth Baseball Association and then also the Green Country Youth Athletics Association. The second one's probably new to most of you. It hasn't been something that's been formed for very long, but we had some really good questions from some of these conversations that we've had over the past few months. And they led into some other questions about some of the other organizations that are out there utilizing the complex and why they weren't having issues that we were having or they were having issues that we weren't having and so on and so forth. So we decided to get together, Muskogee Youth Baseball Association, Green Country Girls Softball Association, and Muskogee Soccer Club, and we decided to form an association together to leverage our expertise, our experience, and put our boards together. And we just felt that it would be a lot stronger to have all that experience in one place, communicating effectively, and also communicating with you guys more effectively and constituents and our shareholders, which are our parents and coaches and so on and so forth. So as far as some of the things that have been seen tonight, that's phenomenal. Parks and Rec's doing a really good job, but we did a walkthrough with Mr. Francis. We saw a lot of really good repairs that we had been wanting to see. And they happened, you know, when they probably needed to happen during that fall season that we had to cancel. And so I don't know if they could have done it at some other time, but we're happy to see them. We definitely think that the kids' safety, the parents' safety, the coaches' safety is paramount to what we do out there on all all levels with soccer, softball, and baseball. So and also applaud you guys for the approval of the $50,000 to the sports complex. As I understand it, I think that's going to go for safety repairs and some infrastructure repairs to make sure that we keep that safety level up for our players and parents and coaches and the shareholders that go out there. So thank you, guys. I think one thing that we're seeing that we're still working on and kind of the analogy I was thinking about is, you know, we have Thanksgiving this week, which is very exciting. And if you've ever cooked that dinner, it's very, very exciting. But we're doing really, really good with the turkey right now, which is the maintenance of the facilities. And I think what we're lacking a little bit is probably on the dressing, which would be the communication. The tournaments that have been approved that are going to be out there, it's pretty much the first time we're all hearing about it. Or according, I'm sorry, let me retract that. The last city council meeting was the first time we had heard about it. The Green Country Youth Athletics Association all got together and discussed that. We hadn't heard about any tournaments, and it makes it really difficult for all of our organizations when we plan on running tournaments to help fund our organizations. It almost feels like you're doing it, we run into an internal competition and trying to find dates and so on and so forth. So so the communication definitely can be a little bit better, I think, and I think that's something that we've discussed and me and Mr. Francis and the group, and I think we're going to work on that. So we're excited to see some better communication. So Ms. Cranford, you had mentioned during our last meeting about registration, and I'm really excited to let you guys know about baseball. Registration's open. We decided to put our money where our mouth was, and registration is free for spring for all participants. So we're very excited about it. We feel like that's a way to come back from this kind of dismal fall experience that we all went through, and we think we can attract some some kids to come back and play. One of the byproducts of that is that's a funding mechanism for us to help offset the cost of insurance and umpires. So that'll put us at a disadvantage when it comes to funding. So that's definitely something that we're exploring. We've had some conversations about possibly the concession stands and exploring that option to where maybe baseball and softball could possibly take over our concession stands during our seasons to help funding for situations like this where we can decrease registration costs to zero for our for our kids around Muskogee. So we're very excited to continue those conversations. I believe soccer already has their concession stand, so they're they're generating revenue from that, which will help them tremendously. We hope it does, and we're looking forward to ways to be able to help them. So I think that's all I have. That was a lot for a couple of months. So thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for your time at Parks and Rec. Thank you, guys, for doing everything you're doing. So.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say, it's exciting to see us all working together on the same page and working to increase our participation in the events and everything out at the sports complex. So I appreciate Parks and Recs and Mr. Francis working together with those with our groups to make all this happen. So with that, I move for it's just a report, so we don't need.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize Brooke for her work. I threw a lot on her here in the last couple of months, but she's been equal to the task. And to Keith Titsworth, a lot of the a lot of the work falls on him directly, and I've I appreciate, sir, I appreciate your passion for the field and the work that you're doing. I've been able to to learn that over the course of the last couple of months, so I think we're in pretty good hands. And we'll continue to iron out the communication, and things will continue to get better.
Well, I'm impressed and thankful for the attitude of all parties. That's very, that's good news.
And to say, post-it tube about the free restoration, I've received a couple texts saying thank you for that. So thank you to Parks and Rec and for the Leaks to on making that happen.
Okay. With that, item number 19.
Hold a discussion and take any necessary action to implement a food for fines program to assist the citizens of the City of Muskogee with payment of outstanding municipal fines for the period of December 1, 2025 through December 19, 2025.
Ms. Jamie Stout, please, Counselor.
Yeah, so I had seen a post that Fort Gibson had posted a couple of weeks ago where they were doing this similar thing to help, you know, do community food drive or and then so that for eat you got a $5 discount or $5 off your fine, up to $50 for every can of food that you bring in if you want to do that way, if you want to bring food versus paying your fines in municipal court. And so I sent that to Katrina and to Judge John Tyler, and they both thought it was a good idea, so I was just bringing that to cancel. It would cancel, it would only go through December 1 through the December 19 of that. It would be a max of $50 that they could get off. But Fort Gibson is doing the same similar thing.
So if I get a speeding ticket and I come in and give you a can of corn, I get $50 off?
You have to ring. You get $5 for a can of corn.
Hey, I'm just working here, okay?
Now, Mr. Hall, we will actually put you in prison for that.
So I did have a question, Jamie. I know in Fort Gibson, when they're doing this, people with outstanding warrants can participate without fear of being arrested when they bring those cans. So I know that is a stipulation in that. Could we add that or?
Yes, it was supposed it wasn't it was supposed to be set up just like Fort Gibson's.
Okay, so I just I had people asking about that.
Yeah, thank you for pointing pointing that out.
I think this is great. It worked great for them. And then they also wanted people wanted to know where the food would go. I know they have a specified food bank. Do we have a specified?
I was thinking like the Muskogee Community Food Pantry or Salvation Army.
That was something else that I was asked about.
Katrina, what time to action?
We'll just move for approval. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Just a second. Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Number third, number 20, please.
Consider approval to remove the traffic signal located at Third Street and Oltmoggi Avenue to be replaced with a two-way stop, stopping Third Street traffic northbound and southbound pending the completion of a warrant study on the intersection conducted by traffic engineering consultants or take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigney.
Yes, so we have a current warrant study going for that intersection. You'll notice right now that light is out of service. It was had some wiring damage from a water leak repair that we did, but we were looking to remove that light anyway. That light is currently with TEC in warrant study. We've discussed this with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation since they do maintain Oltmoggi. That is a mechanical traffic signal, which is an outdated, antiquated type of technology used in a signal. So you can't buy parts for those anymore off the shelf. So if something breaks in that light, we have to go get it machined, custom-made to fit that style of light. Our traffic signal contractor does not maintain those type of lights, so we do maintain that one in-house. It would be very expensive to upgrade that to a modern-day type traffic signal, several hundred thousand at a minimum. So we would like to see this getting taken out. We have it pending that warrant study because that study has not been completed. We have a good estimation of what they're going to tell us, and that it's not going to meet the warrant. But typically, we would put this on after we get that warrant study. But since that light is already out of service right now, and we have a holiday coming up, we didn't want to sit idle through the Christmas season and not get an answer until January and have that kind of in limbo. So that's why this is pending that study. We do anticipate getting that study back next month, and we do anticipate that light not meeting the the warrants for a lighted intersection. Be happy to answer any questions.
I went through there today, I believe, at stop signs. I could see the big black patch where we had dug quite a hole. Traffic seemed to move, 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 move smoothly for smoothly for me today. So might be a good deal. And I do remember those old stop lines, the old Flintstone cartoons, they had those lights, same lights. Any other questions or comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes, item passes. Number 21, please.
Consider approval of the Crossland Heavy Contractors bid for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $96,992,000 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Council and Mayor, we have this before you to approve the $96,992,000 bid from Crossland Heavy Contractors. Just a brief reminder, this is a project that is under consent order from ODEQ. We do have to build a new wastewater plant. We have no choice. This is due to just aging in the 2019 flood event that had happened out there that caused most of that plant to go underwater. When we were approached by ODEQ, it was failing, and in some of their inspections, they did require us to do an engineering report to determine a solution that we had to present to them in an engineering report that was done by Hub Engineering. And at that time, there was a construction cost that was approximately $72 million that was determined in that report. Now, ODEQ did review that. ODEQ does have engineers on staff, and they look at all things, including the costs as well. We did come back and get a follow-up to the consent order saying, yes, you will update your plant, and it was put on a schedule to to put in a new sewer plant. That schedule was part of your packet. I included it toward the back of this agenda item. At that time, we did have to go out for an engineering firm. We decided to select Olson, who had actually partnered with Hub, and they both reviewed the price of the $72 million and felt like the plant could be built for that at that time. We started the plans underway, and well into that plan set design, we discovered that we might be running up against the pricing going up. And that's when we sat down with our engineers and did some valued engineering and removed some things from that plant to try to keep that cost in in control. Unfortunately, it did bid. It bid at $96,992, which is considerably over what we felt like it was going to. And we did sit down with the engineers and discuss, you know, why did we only get the one bid from Crossland, which I failed to mention just now, but we only got the one bid. I supplied in your packet. I supplied in your packet, there's a spreadsheet toward the end of the, the stuff I put in your packet that has the answers from each individual contractor, that was at the pre-bid meeting. But if you look at that, just about every one of them said the same thing. There's just absolutely too much work in the area, and their, their project schedules wouldn't fit ours. And they also felt like because Crossland was here local, that they would also win the bid. That bid did come in extremely high, as I stated. Some of the reasoning behind that was, again, there's just tons of projects in this area. There is a huge inflation rate right now. Pipe costs, concrete costs just spiked up. One of our local contractors, Justin Cook, is actually here and can speak to that concrete pricing going up. I know if you had a question for him. And of course, the tariffs did have an effect on it. Everybody's afraid what tariffs are going to do to their marketing and are raising prices. We did go back and put this on your agenda to authorize Nate and Alan from our bond counsel to present this to OWRB to increase the amount of our loan. Avery and I actually represented the city at the OWRB, OWRB meeting, and it was approved. We are looking to approve this for the bid amount that was bid. We have to take that bid amount, and then we can actually work to lower that price. We've discussed it with our engineers, and we feel like we can get at least 1.8 million out of it. And there is a OWRB loan breakdown on your, on your screens. I would like to point out the contingency is a misrepresentation, that's actually the engineering fees. So, the bid amount, again, from Crossland was the 96,900, the engineering fees was 6,360, construction engineering fees, that's if you have something that needs to be engineered during the project that is not working, you have to come up with a solution. It gives you a little leeway for that, and then it's actually mostly for inspection services. In a project like this, we are required to have inspectors by OWRB. Of course, the vast, there's bond administrative fees that comes in with that for a total loan amount of 1,106,165,081 and 16 cents. That's going to get lowered down to approximately 1,432,676,16. I hope I explained it well enough. I'll try to answer any questions. Avery's here. Sean and Vanessa are here from Olson Engineering, as well as Scott from our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, I've got a question. So, while the contingencies aren't listed there, they are in there.
Yes, we are going to have about 2.1 million in contingency. And for a project, and that's in the bid price, in, in a project of this magnitude, you're going to need that type of a contingency.
Okay, and am I dreaming, or did I miss something? It seems like last time we talked about this and, and voted to borrow some additional money, it seemed to me like all the monies were like a million, or, or 120 million or something. Is that, was I thinking different?
We threw a lot of numbers out there, but that's what we came down to. So it is the 106.
Okay. Didn't we throw some bigger numbers out?
So, I don't remember throwing that big out, but I do remember the 106.
Well, a lot of times I remember things that never happened. That's what my wife says anyway.
So, when we did it, there was like a deal of about 110, somewhere, because we were doing, it was like $80 million, and then it was going to be like an extra additional 30 added in there for the actual loan. And one of the things that drives, gives us heartburn sometimes is that the population, the community watches our, our meetings, and they're going, well, y'all need another $30 million. And this is what it was going to be, and then y'all kind of explain that, that to them. But then, now it comes, so we're looking at 110, then it drops back to 96 million dollars. So, then they're going, okay, what are y'all going to do with the rest of that money? And those are kind of questions that we get answered in the contingency. So, what it wrapped us into a contingency? What would be a contingency?
An unknown.
Unknowns?
So if I go to start building a building and I run into something that I didn't expect at all, and I can have that changed, instead of putting a change order together, I pay for it out of a contingency fund.
So, soil compaction might be an example. If you went to build and, and the soil you were building on was not very stable, and we needed to remediate that site with better soil, so they'd have more firm compaction for a foundation, that might be, that might be a contingency item.
And when we built our water treatment plant, we failed to put some stairs over some of the piping down in those basements. And we didn't discover that until we were into the project, and then we had to put them in, and we paid for that out of contingency without having put a change order before yet.
But do remember that, that contingency was just mislabeled. That's engineering. Contingency, contingency should say engineering.
And it's built into that 96 million.
Yeah.
And?
A contingency is, but the 6.3 is, is the engineering cost that we've already expended for the design.
So most of that's already gone.
It's all gone. That was the bill for design and engineering.
Yes, so we haven't paid the total engineering fee, but we're getting real close.
Okay.
So.
So, and inspections, final inspection fees, anything like that coming up?
So the inspection fees are built into this slide, they're that 2.15.
Okay.
And that will be done probably by our third-party inspection services, and we know that, that is a known cost, so we're good with that.
So?
And, and there is a chance, Counselor, that at the end of this project, there may be some money left in it that we can use to either put back to the loan, or, or do something else at the sewer plant, or buy some other type of sewer equipment. We always need a new truck, plus truck.
And this is one of my biggest questions that's been asking me, like I'm, I don't understand all this, so I just got to ask these questions because they're asked of me. There's a rumor flying around here that even though we're building this new plant, there's a number out there like 20 or 30% that we're already behind on what we needed to build it. And I don't know if that's a true fact or not. There's some rumors flying around it.
I think he's talking about, yeah, the, the capacity.
So, I wouldn't mind if our engineers come up and answered that question, because they can tell you what we designed the capacity at and how it was looked at for the projections for why we built it, at the level we built it, and what we can do moving forward, so.
Okay.
Sean, if you wouldn't mind, would you give me some help?
Good evening. Sean McConaughey with Olson.
Thank you for being here.
So, when we, when we start a project like this, the first thing we got to do is figure out where we're going. Most wastewater plants, we're looking at least 25 years into the future. So, the initial report, the facility plan that was done for this by Hub from the beginning of this job, started with your base population in Muskogee, and then did an extrapolation based on current population trends, looking out to 2050. So, based on that population trend and that projection, there, they have a population a little over 41,000 people. And again, that's looking at the past and forward, that's all we've got, because I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. So, that gives us a average flow rate in the plant of about eight is where we're building, which is about double. And then we have a peaking factor built into that to handle any of those off-time peaks that come through.
Is about double what it is now?
It's double that again.
Okay.
So it's about 16 and a half, Mr. Peak Factor, that you could run through the plant.
Million gallons a day?
Yes, so, sorry, that's all in million gallons per day, yes.
So, with that being said, will the AI companies that are moving here, will they affect that any with them running water through there or anything like that?
Oh yeah, it always impacts it because it takes water to run them.
Yeah.
And that's something we're actually working with Muskogee on to look at the impacts that has to the plant. We're working with those, those companies right now.
I know that they put contaminants in that water, as far as like the antifreeze is kind of a solution to cool those computers down. So when it gets to our deal, I just wanted to make sure that our system will be able to break that down, handle it, and we don't, we're not talking to DEQ in a few years about what we're doing wrong.
Right.
And make sure we got enough to handle that. And like I said, the 120 or the 110 million dollars wouldn't have been a bill if we needed it. I mean, if we're building out that far, we're building, adding on, that's all I'm asking these questions for, to make sure that we're, we're looking in the future. Even though we're a small community of about 37, we want to be 107, I don't know. But it's just, I just want to make sure that we're building for the future, like you said, and, and anything that comes to Olandis, that we're prepared for it, or the ability to add on a little bit, not be asking for.
Yep, we're, we're doing the best we can with the numbers we got. But yeah, based on where the plant sits today, its current peaking load that runs through it, that was added into it to get to that peak factor of what we want the plant to run at when we get done.
Sean, is it also safe to say that there's another part to this? And it's not how much we're adding, but also looking at ways to reduce flow, such as INI, things like that, that are going to help? Well, help not necessarily increase our capacity, but increase our capacity. If we're, if we have a maximum daily allowance of 10 million gallons a day, and we reduce INI infiltration inflow by a million gallons, we've essentially given ourselves another million gallons of treatment capacity. So it's a, it's, it's dual approach. We're looking to build for the future, but we're also looking to fix our system to reduce unwanted waters, rain and other stormwater inflow that gets into our system that, that hurts us as well.
Hey Sean, I, I do have a quick question as well. How does this price reflective of any other projects that, that you're aware of or you, you may have going? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Of course, we're kind of everywhere across here, so to find one that is right here, this exact scenario, I don't have that.
Similar.
In similar, based on recent bids here in Oklahoma, this number is falling in that trend. We've talked to lots of contractors since we opened that bid last month, just to see where they're seeing numbers come in. And based on flow rate into the plant versus cost, this is in that trend line, it's actually slightly below it.
I was glad to see the comments from the bidders, because I know that that was a citizen concern. It's like, why, how, they, they just have one bid. And to, to have this and to be able to say, there were other bidders, and this is their reasoning for not accepting that bid, because this is specialty work. This is not just something that any and everybody can do, and I think a lot of times we don't take those things into consideration when we make comments and statements like that. So I'm glad that you added this for public record, for people to be able to see what those contractors actually said as to why they did not accept the bids.
I think it's important to note, too, that we have a lot of local subs that are part of this project as well.
Mr. Cook is going to be a huge portion of it.
We've got one sitting here, so. So yes, Crossland did very good with trying to find local labor sources to help them out with this. We're very excited about the project.
Thank you for your hard work.
Any other questions? Comments?
I have one more. So, what's the total estimated timeline here? I mean, when do we start, when do we end?
So, three years is the final completion on the construction contract. So as soon as we start, they've got three years from that date. In talking with Crossland, pending weather, all that fun stuff, because that is three years in the future. Hopefully, in a couple, two and a half years, we might have a plant fired up.
Counselor Brawley, I also put the ODEQ schedule in your packet that shows you when we have to have it built by.
19, or 29, or whatever.
Yeah, we should meet that, we should meet that schedule.
April 29.
Yep, and right now, we're ahead of that schedule. We're supposed to be under construction by spring of 26, by the end of spring of 26, and we will beat that right now, especially if, if we get an award now and we don't have to go rebid, we're ahead of schedule.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we've got a citizen that's up to speak on this item, Mr. Ryan Lowe.
Ryan Lowe, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I had quite a few things I wanted to speak on this agenda item tonight, but I'm dumbfounded at what I'm hearing. I'm almost certain that none of you guys have any clue on the particulars of this other than what Mr. Stewart has told you. And the status quo is to go with staff recommends approval. Nothing against Mr. Stewart, but I've heard terms, as I was sitting here, as crazy sounding as, we could always use a new truck. We threw a lot of numbers out there. Your contingency's off here, so that's, that's erroneous. Said that was engineering fees, and I also heard him say that the engineering fees had almost been paid off. So is that included in the new loan? Are we going to borrow it again? That's another question I have. I came to the last Public Works meeting, and I understand this has to be done, but I ask you guys to pause, pump the brakes, and look at this deal. I'm asking you to do that again. It's obvious that nobody knows what's going on up here. It's also obvious that we need to do something. I'm asking you to take a look at this deal and make some educated decisions. Last time we were in here, you guys spoke about you'd already made a $80, or excuse me, $80 million loan, and you needed $37 million more, and you guys voted to apply for that loan. Well, now we're at a stark difference. You know, are you still, I, I'm, I don't understand, are you still getting that $37 million loan? Does anybody know? Are you applying for that? Nobody? If so, that's $20 million worth of fluff. I know there's going to be things that pop up, but there's so many unanswered questions. I know that you, you folks can't run your home life like that, you can't balance your budget like that. And at the last meeting, when a city council member stood up and said, how are we going to pay for this, which is a legitimate concern, the answer was, we'll figure it out. We can't continue to run Muskogee like this, and I implore you tonight to do the right thing. And instead of always saying, we're in crisis mode, this is an emergency, and let's just run this through. I would also like to know, this is probably one of the, the largest projects we've ever put through in the city of Muskogee. I've never heard of one this big. How can we, how can we rush this through with one bid? I have a lot of questions, and I kind of got off topic here because I can't believe what I'm hearing. I mean, it just, it, it's unbelievable. And it was alluded to that, you know, we put in here that six other bidders gave reasons why they couldn't bid, and I want to read those out to you. We're talking about a, a $100 million-plus project. Number one, and I won't read the company, they couldn't make it fit and give it proper attention with the other opportunities that were on the, on the dock, on their docket. Number two, they are tracking other projects coming out in the next few months, and they currently have a lot of work and it doesn't fit into their schedule. Number three, very simply, we're busy and we just didn't see this fitting our project, this project fitting in our schedule. Number four, this certain contractor did not attend the pre-bid, they had plenty of work lined out and wouldn't have the manpower to take this project on. Number five, with where they're based out of, they didn't feel like they would be able to bid competitively of CHC and Archer-Westmore bidding. And number six, engineers had reached out and let them know about the prior, or the project prior to bidding, but they never pursued the project, unsure why engineers never heard back from them. Do you guys believe that?
Again, I don't think we have anything that we could.
Can I finish my time?
You asked a question.
You don't answer anything else?
Yeah, go ahead, finish.
Do you guys believe that? It's a $100 million project. You don't think there are companies out there that want to bid that? If I was in that space and I had a construction company, I'd be knocking your door down to bid that. It's guaranteed money. It's guaranteed by the government. It's going to be paid. I'm asking you tonight to take a hard look at what you're fixing to do. I know it has to be done, but we, we have to do a little better job. And a good friend of mine once told me, never forget to dance with the one that brung you. And that's those people that put those, put you guys in the seat to do the right thing. That's your time.
Excuse me?
Just a general comment, okay.
You can make any comment.
I will say, we have no control over why people don't bid. All we can do is put the process in process, and people choose, their companies choose to do what they want to do. This is a job that is specialized, and so you already know that that limits bidders in itself. And for one person to come forward and say that they will do it when we know that we already had the designated timeframe, then we did need to move. I think that putting in a number when we voted before, and them saying that they would look to see where they could figure out where they could move the numbers and kind of look to see where they could figure out where they could move the numbers and kind of decrease that, they said that when we first did this. So we put all of those frameworks in place so that if anything happened, they would have those safeguards. And for them to come back tonight and say that they were able to crunch those and move those, I think that they're doing their due diligence to do what we asked them to do. And so while we understand that these things are difficult to do, they have to be done, and these are the situations that you did vote us in to do, and sometimes they don't look like you would do if you ran your home, because if you ran your home, I'd put a fan maybe instead of fixing it. But because this is not my home, I have to do what's right by the citizens and do what's needed to be done.
I've got a question. Mr. Cook, would you mind coming up and answering a question?
Justin Cook, Cook Consulting.
You're a well-respected contractor around town. Is it plausible that five other companies, are those responses that you heard, are those all very plausible response, responses?
I spoke with all those companies myself. We're subcontractor on this job for Crossland Construction, we send our numbers to all of the general contractors. And I knew most of them wouldn't bid it, several told me they wouldn't before the bid. I thought there was three going to bid it. After the bids, I got involved a little bit on my side because I was a little worried. I haven't worked with Crossland before, they're our local company, we do know them, we work against them all the time, beside them. All the other companies, there's only six or eight people between the Rockies and the, and the Mississippi that service this area for this type of work, water and wastewater plants. They're all too busy right now. There's multiple two-hundred million dollar plants under design right now in Texas. Our main competition's in Kansas and Texas. Neither one of those guys have any capacity in the next two years to start a plant. So they wouldn't even take my numbers. Well, two of them did take my numbers on Subcon, but the others didn't even put the job together.
So it's, it's just like me trying to get a good sheet rocker right now.
And it's not, these are not inflated numbers. People might think that these are, there's only one bidder, so they've run the numbers up. Crossland didn't know how many people were going to bid when it was turned in. These are all driven off our material supplies. The supplier on this job that's providing all the equipment, the specialty equipment, which is Haynes Equipment out of Oaklawn City, we've all dealt with them, they provided millions and millions of dollars for the city of equipment, and they provide everything basically north of Texas line to, in Oklahoma, the main point, but they're moving into Texas. And equipment costs went up over twenty percent on this job in the last year, hard equipment cost. It, it's not in this project, but after this project bid, I got a cost increase on my desk that all of our aggregates are going up from ten to eighteen percent January one, most of them fifteen. All aggregates affect everything from dirt to concrete, sand, rock, gravel. So if it was to rebid, in my opinion, you see a lot higher numbers. This happened, this is not a new phenomenon of the construction costs going up, happened on Arkansas River Bridge, ask ODOT about it, it went up twenty meg in, in one cycle. So unfortunately, construction costs are way high right now.
Thank you.
And not coming down.
Thank you for that explanation. I would take what Mr. Cook says to the bank. He knows what he's talking about, and he's not lying about what he's talking about. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, have you recognized? On the total loan amount is ninety-six million, nine-hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That is the bid amount.
That's the bid amount, okay, so.
And the bid amount is included with the.
Okay, so the loan amount, what's our loan amount?
We were looking at the one-oh-six, one-sixty-five. And that's going to be reduced down by the one-point-eight, which will get us down to one-four.
Okay.
And what was the loan approved for our last meeting?
So we haven't actually entered an actual number into the loan. That's what, the OWRB just approved us up to that one-oh-six, and now we're going to try to reduce that down, and then that's what Nate's waiting on to get to actually put on the application to enter it. And that's going to be the one-oh-four, three-twenty-two, six-seventy-six, sixteen.
Will the final number come back to council?
I don't think so.
We can make you aware of what the total amount, but the worst-case scenario, you're seeing one-oh-six, one-sixty-five, eighty-one, sixteen. Expected reductions from, in negotiations with Crossland, once we, once a contract is secured with them, they've already been in some preliminary discussions to make some reductions.
So we don't know what the loan amount number is right, at this point?
No, we can tell you that the one-oh-six, one-sixty-five, eighty-one, sixteen would be the maximum, worst-case scenario. We expect it to be closer to one-oh-four and change. And I do want to speak and clarify from Mr. Lowe, so to continue to say again, that's, that's engineering cost. That, those monies came out of the first tranche of loan funds that we secured back in 2024. So this entire last year, they've been engineering and designing this plant, and we've been paying as we go for the engineering design. And so when Mr. Stewart alluded that it's almost paid, we've, we are receiving the final bills for the work that's being completed.
Yeah, we're down to very tail end there.
But that money, we're not double paying for anything. It's included into that total loan amount. Earlier, or the last time we met, we did not have a good feel for construction, engineering fees, and observation. Since that time, we have received the requests for proposals with pricing estimates, and so we're confident in the two-point-one-five cost for that. So like, again, worst-case scenario, we're one-hundred-and-six million, one-sixty-five, eighty-one, sixteen. But we, and, and that would be, if you approve the Crossland heavy bid tonight, the engineered fees already been in there, we would still have to come back for construction engineering and agreement with them for whoever is selected to do that. And then, of course, the bond administration fees, those costs are built into this already.
Now, that's Nate Nell's piece.
Could, could we not table this tonight and have it on our next agenda to, and see what we, what the, that original loan amount was, what, and see all the numbers laid out in front of us instead of just it all coming in at different bits and pieces?
So we've already put off the bid award by fifteen days, if you remember. And we're under the gun, and Katrina, we've got only so much time to respond to the bids. It's, it was forty-five days, and we got, well, and we got it extended by fifteen.
December fifth is the, the firm deadline that we're given by state law to accept a bid without having to rebid.
Well, regardless of that, which is true, I don't know that we need to consider holding this off. I don't see any good reason.
I'd like to make a motion that we push this to our December first agenda.
It appears we have no second on that. I'll make a motion to consider the approval of a Crossland heavy contractor's bid for the wastewater treatment plant. Seconded motion. We have a, a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
I'm going to say yes, but I would like to, when we move forward, I would like to see an itemized of cost on this job.
We will have that presented publicly at the December first Public Works.
And I think that will clear up a lot of people's questions that they're, they're asking right now. And just to, just to be transparent on this, because I know y'all have a lot of the numbers that we don't, and a lot of the stuff that's going on that y'all are going up here, and we, I think if we show people where it actually went and how it's been spent, it would clarify some of this.
We'll present it publicly at the December first Public Works meeting.
As soon as we get this number finalized, we'll get that to Nate, and then he'll have final numbers for us.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
I want to say that from the start, Dan's been interested in making sure that he's as open as he can be with the community, and he continues to feel that way. I think it's sincere in preparing things so that he can prepare the public, he gets answered questions, I think would be very, very nice, as I know you guys are going to do. So with that, I'll say yes. Motion passes. Item number twenty-two, please.
Consider approval of the letter of agreement for joint water pipeline expansion project agreement between Georgia Pacific Muskogee, City of Muskogee, and the Muskogee City County Port Authority through their Port Capital Development Fund regarding the installation of an alternate city water line to enhance water supply reliability for the GP Muskogee facility or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, first I want to say that Kristen and Brian Scott are here from GP over here, so they'll answer any questions you might have that GP could answer that I can't. But we did present this a while back as a joint project between the city, the port, and GP to put a water line connection in out on Hancock Street to try to solve some of the problems that GP's had when, when our twenty-four inch water line goes down over on Chandler. As you'll remember, I told you that actually has GP go out of water, which is very costly to them, so they can't really afford to be without water. And so we started conversations with them, and the port got involved in that as well and was able to come up with the, the G-three project. And I'll remind you, this agreement has Georgia Pacific covering four-hundred thousand of this, the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, too, that P-three program's going to do three-hundred thousand. And eighty-eight, one-eighty-nine is going to come from the Port Capital Development Fund. GP had asked in their letter of agreement that any overruns would come at the city's expense. I will tell you that we went back to our engineer and talked about things that we could do if it did come in higher than expected. And one of the things we can do is reduce the size of the casing going underneath the turnpike. That, that casing is right now going to be a twenty-four, and it, boring a twenty-four inch hole underneath the turnpike's quite expensive, and it could be reduced in size, although if there's any future expansion, it would also have to be redone. But we looked at ways to make sure we could get this project under costs, so we're okay with taking on the added line that the city would cover any overruns on this project. Do recommend approval, and GP again is here to answer any questions towards them, but feel like this is a great improvement. And by the way, this doesn't just improve water for GP, this takes care of that southeastern corner of Muskogee as well. So it's not just a project that will help them, it, it helps quite a bit of Muskogee. So we're, we're glad to see it going, and we'll answer any questions.
This will be a great addition for, for that side of town.
And we do appreciate GP.
Yes, yes, their, their contribution to our community is great. With that, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Item number twenty-three, please.
Consider approval of the proposed corrected 2026 meeting schedule for city council and public works and finance committees as per City Code two-dash-twenty and Council Policy one-dash-two or take other necessary action. Mayor and Council, this item was originally discussed and approved at the October twenty-seventh city council meeting. Shortly after, I was notified of a couple of scrivener's errors in the background. Rather than holding the public works and finance meeting on October ninth, as I had printed, it should read November the ninth. And also, in the month of December, the city council meeting should be scheduled on the fourteenth rather than the seventeenth, as was presented. Also, Counselor Hall has requested to propose changing the November twenty-third meeting, which is Thanksgiving week, city council meeting, and he would like to propose to move that to the week before, which would be the sixteenth. That would be up to council to decide if they wish to make this additional change or just the errors which I had presented. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and staff recommends approval.
And I would like to say, one reason is selfish, and the other reason is selfish. So we had several of our employees that were on vacation this week, that took time off, that had to come up here and present to us today, and I don't think that's fair to them if they're taking off the time for their family and stuff on Thanksgiving week, that they've got to come up here and deal with us. So I'd like to move that to the week before, and also, it's deer season, and I had to come out of the deer woods to come up here tonight. I move for approval.
With.
With amendments.
With the amended.
With amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number twenty-four, please.
Consider approval of an agreement with Dobson Fiber, providing fiber services to city facilities in the amount of five-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-five dollars per month or take other necessary action.
Mr. Cummings.
Mayor and Council, so we do already have an agreement with Dobson Fiber, we're looking to renew that agreement. It will add, we had, we had several facilities that weren't completely on Dobson Fiber, or a couple of facilities that weren't completely on Dobson Fiber, our fleet and Fire Station Six. This will put, move fleet to Dobson Fiber, it will replace existing fiber at Fire Station Six with Dobson Fiber. It also increases our bandwidth here from the city from three-hundred megabits per second to a gigabit per second. So with all that, the new agreement saves us a net, it's a net savings of five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions?
Does the city have any buildings west of Fifty-Fourth Street and city limits that need fiber? Because as I know, the city residents west of Fifty-Fourth Street can't get Dobson fiber right now, so it's just my shameless way of throwing that out there.
I believe, you're right, I believe our, our westmost facility is Hat Box. I don't think, I don't think we have.
That's east of Fifty-Fourth, so, okay.
Yep, so.
But in, in your talks and discussions with Dobson, Counselor Whoos would not mind if you mentioned that to them?
There's several residents out west.
I, I certainly can, because we're also asking them to go further south to facilitate the airport. The airport is on fiber now, but it's not through Dobson, it's through Eagle Lake.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Item number twenty-five.
Receive a report from staff and hold a discussion regarding the recent federal government shutdown and any impact it may have had on the citizens of the city of Muskogee as it relates to their utility accounts and take other necessary action.
Vice Mayor Derek Reed, Counselor Melody Cranford, and Counselor Jamie Stout. Who would like to start?
I'm sure. So we got together during the government shutdown, we really wanted to do something for our citizens to make sure that during that time, they didn't worry about their services being disconnected. We know that the government is open now, those that were furloughed have received their total fundings, some of those that have SNAP benefits have already received those. So we want to just figure out if anything else happens, what we would need to do to move forward so that we can make sure that our citizens' services are not at risk or interrupted during those times. I think, Tammy, if you could explain, I think two citizens did not understand about the two opportunities for them to extend and all those things, but if you could just explain that for the record so that people can understand how that works.
So every utility customer is eligible for what we call a payment plan. It is an extension from your cutoff date, not your due date, but your cutoff date. If you receive that little yellow card in the mail, that is your cutoff date. We will do two of those per year, they must be four months apart, but you are. per year. They must be four months apart, but you are eligible to come into the office. It must be the account holder. They can come in. They can sign up for that extension, and that will grant them an additional 10 days to extend that bill out. In some instances, if we have like a large water leak or something that's unforeseen like that, we will work individually to try to work with them over a longer period of time. But this is just for your general monthly utility bill.
I'd like to thank Counselor Cranford. She brought this idea up to Tammy, I believe, and was trying to be proactive, to get out there in front, to help some of the people anyway that we or she could. I do know that you were quite involved and quite active with community food grazers and such. So this was sincere and near and dear to her heart, and thank you for that.
I will add, I did check with staff in the Revenue Division to see if they had any specific phone calls addressing that issue and asking for additional time. And while they had some that called to ask if the city were doing anything, we didn't have anyone that specifically said, "I'm in this situation, and can you help me with my bill?" So.
Do you have any idea how many citizens were possibly cut off during this time due to being unable to pay?
I did have staff pull a report to compare to last year. So we cut off, the way we bill, we have five cycles that we bill, one of those being a commercial cycle. So the rest we bill each week, which means we cut off each week. When I did the percentages and I compared October, because we had not done a complete November cycle yet, when I looked at, I'm sorry, October compared this year to last year, and I look at all of those cycles together, there's about a 13% increase of cutoffs compared to last year. But then we've also had a rate increase on top of that that could factor into that. So the 13% is there. I can't tell you why that 13% is greater, other than I do know that this was the first billing month with the sewer increase and the CIP.
So what's our reconnect charge?
So if we cut you off on a Wednesday for non-payment, it's a $10 fee for the cutoff. And once you pay that payment that is past due, if you pay it prior to Thursday of the following week, it's another $10 to turn it back on. If it gets to the next week on that Thursday, it's a $25 lock fee. So we lock up the meter, or we put a spacer in the meter to prevent the flow of water. Once that bill is paid, then it's the $25 unlock fee. So the most that they can have on a bill would be a $60, $10 cutoff, 25 lockup, 25 unlock, and then the late fee that is applied once the bill is delinquent.
I really don't think it'd be unreasonable to look at just for the month of December, possibly if there's a way that we could waive those fees. Because we're people who are cut off for circumstances out of their control. I mean, I don't know if that would be a big hit to the city's revenues, but to waive some of those fees might help people, especially during this time of year.
Yeah. The only issue that I see with that is we would have to manually credit every single account. There's no way to just waive that fee. Once that work order is created to cut that water off, that fee is automatically applied. So we would have to go in and manually cut, I mean, manually go back and credit all of those fees to those 150 to 200 accounts that are being cut off that week times four weeks. It can be done. It's just a very long manual process to do that.
So you're saying it can be done?
It can be done. It can be done, yes. Anything can be done. We can figure a way. It's just a very long manual process. We would have to do that on every single account.
So I'm saying, so to his point, if it can be done, if they could bring proof of, not just everybody, if they can bring proof of their furlough or their SNAP benefits being cut, not just every citizen, but those people who we know were directly impacted by.
The shutdown.
The shutdown.
It would be much simpler. It would need to be the account holder.
Yes.
That brought them in, brought in their paperwork, and then as they come in on that case-by-case basis, yes, it would be much simpler to issue the credit on those fees.
And it would just need to be residential accounts, too, not commercial.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And would we do October, the October and November billing, because the shutdown went through for their November water payments?
Well, I thought we were talking about for the month of December.
We're just talking about for the month of December.
Oh, in the month of December.
Yeah, because if they got paid, they can get to reconnect. We could waive the fee.
But I do want to stress, it does need to be the account holder of the utility account. Okay.
So I think if we specify those things, I just think that during this holiday season, I know, you know, I understand, like, it's going to put us in a bind, but it is, people are in a bind, you know, that lost their benefits, and they shouldn't have to choose between feeding their kids and trying to disconnect. That's just my opinion on it.
So for clarity.
Yes.
We're talking about account holders bringing in their letters stating on their benefits, either their SNAP or their furlough.
Yes.
We're only talking about the disconnect and reconnect fees, and we're only speaking from December 1 to December 31 of 2025.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
So there needs to be a motion to that.
Yes, we'll need a motion to do that.
Shaw's items, so I'll let you guys.
I'll make the motion that we waive those fees during December 1st of 2020, at the end of December.
We have a motion and a second.
Can I just add one other point to this? We want citizens to understand that other cities did this, other cities did that. We were in the middle of a billing cycle already. That's an important point to put out. And also, sometimes helping can be hurting. And so this is one of the things that we want to be clear on as well. You know, some cities may have, you know, waived the disconnects altogether. Tammy, if you can explain, to get to a disconnection point, that person is already two months in the rear.
Correct. By the time we're disconnecting them, which is why we limit the payment plans. So by the time we're disconnecting their service, they have either already received another bill, or they're going to receive it in the next day or two, because we bill in arrears. They've already used that water. We bill after the fact, and by the time we get to the cutoff point, then they're already basically two months behind. This would be three months behind if you allowed another month to go, which makes it really difficult for them to get caught up and pay those balances, even without the cutoff fees. It gets expensive, so.
And so once you're disconnected, it would take the total amount to reconnect.
Correct. Yes. Yes. All the past due amount. The current bill would not be due, but all of the past due amount would be due.
And so, you know, that's just my point. You know, we don't want to help to the point where we hurt as well. We know people are in a crisis, but you know, this is a great step.
And just to clarify on that motion, that's for the, they do need to bring their furlough and ETS and stuff in.
They're approved. Okay.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's been a long night.
Yes, it has.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 26.
Consider approval of the appointment of Cody Moore to the Board of Adjustment to serve a three-year term, filling the expired term of Steve Dennis, beginning December 1, 2025, and ending November 30, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Hall.
Yes. This is kind of a bittersweet. Steve Dennis is a great guy. I've known him for a long time, and Cody Moore is kind of a young guy that's coming up, and he's trying to get more active in our city and take him, trying to fill out his place and what he wants to do with everything. So he's been wanting to be more involved, and he asked me if he could be on the Board of Adjustments, and I was more than happy to put his name down. So I've made for, I make a recommendation that Cody Moore become on the Code of Adjustments.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 27, please.
Consider approval of the appointment of Dr. Tim Holder to the Muskogee Medical Center Authority to fill an unexpired term, beginning December 1, 2025, and ending May 31, 2027, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Dan Hall.
Dr. Holder, I've known him for several years, been involved with his family. He's very active in our community, just a great guy all around, honest, trustworthy, just a strong, strong man in our community. And I recommend for him to be on the Muskogee Medical Center Authority.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Now, I think we've got a couple of citizens that would like to speak to the council. Mr. Ron Dean, I think you have three minutes, please.
Ron Dean, thank you, council and mayor, for allowing me a moment to speak to you. A question that I want to bring up tonight is how much engagement from the public is necessary with government? How much is too much? Is there too much? And I think, I think we've got ordinances, we've got laws, we've got policies that give us a minimum amount of involvement, and I think too often, we're satisfied with minimum involvement. Where can we restrict the public's involvement with us in what we do? And guys, if we're in a service business, and we are in government, we serve the public. That's what we are. We are public servants. And to serve the public, my gosh, we've got to be involved with them. We've got to be listening with them. We've got to be finding out what they're thinking. We've got to be going out of our way to involve government in what we do and how we do it, to know what they're thinking, to know what they're desiring, to know what they like, to know what they don't like, to hear from them their ideas, their suggestions, their complaints, their praises that come not often enough, probably. We need to do that with the council, but we need to take it to all of the employees, and that's going to come from leadership down. Our boards and commissions and our authorities, when you come up to speak to them about something, if you are even aware that something's going up, they'll give you two minutes to speak, and then when you ask for, you know, can we put this off? Can we do whatever? No, you can go to the council and talk to them. It's going to go through there. I think we need to look at what we're doing, how we're doing it, and ask ourselves daily this question. Are we engaging the public enough? What can I do individually? And what can we do as a city that is here serving the public? What can we do to make the public feel like they're part of the process? Too often, I think the public feels like they're serving the city rather than the city serving the public. So I think we need to work hard at changing that narrative and give the public the, that our desire is that we're serving you and we want to hear from you. We want to know what you're thinking, and we'll go out of our way to engage you in the conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Pocahontas Hina. Yeah. Say your name again, so I'll know it.
It's Pocahontas Hina.
Hina. Thank you.
It's a tricky name. Thank you. Thank you for the moment to speak with you all. I would like to ask the city to reconsider the policy of making kitty cats contained. I like my cats and my neighbors' cats to wander the yard to catch squirrels, considering squirrels cause 20% of the house fires in Oklahoma. I like them catching the rats and the mice and the gophers and the voles, and if they have to be contained in the house, that'll stop, and then we'll have a real bad problem. Right now, my neighborhood doesn't have any rats or any problems like that. I would like it to stay that way. I don't let my cats roam. My neighbors don't let their cats roam. We usually all know where they're at. However, we do have a real bad feral cat problem in Muskogee. Some of us are helping our neighbors to fix their kitty cats and just live trapping and releasing once we fix them. I mean, I've done quite a few since I've been in Muskogee, just because that's the right thing to do, you know? They are abandoned a lot. That needs to be stopped. You know, people can't just move off and leave their animals like that. That's, there are laws against animal abandonment. I would just like the city to reconsider making our, picking our cats up and fining us $280 per animal for letting them, not keeping them contained in the house. And that's about all I can say to that. So thank you for your time and listening to my complaints.
I've got a quick little question for you. Do these feral cats give your cats a bad name?
Not really, not in my neighborhood, because my neighborhood's real good about not having too many feral cats. However, I do know areas in the city that do have a severe feral cat problem.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number 28, please.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-07, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the southwestern quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. B pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-13, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the northeastern quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. C pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-14, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the southeastern quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. D pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-15, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the northeastern quadrant of the City of Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. E pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the lawsuit stalled Polaris Technology Inc. versus City of Muskogee, case number CB-2025-457, filed in the District Court and in for Muskogee County, Oklahoma, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. F pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim number 10-23-32, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. G pursuant to Section 307(b)(1) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the hiring of a new employee for the Municipal Court of the City of Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. H pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
Could we have a motion to go into executive session? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
So per state law, I'd like to.
Executive session.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Into regular session, Ms. Bowdenhammer.
No. Roll call.
Roll call to be back into regular session. I'm sorry.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
Okay. Now, Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you. 28A for.
Now, Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you. 28A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, council did convene an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-07, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the southwestern quadrant of the city, and appropriate motion would be to approve or deny the economic development project as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I'll need somebody to either approve or deny.
Approve the recommendation in executive session.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on approving. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item 28B pursuant to Section, I'm sorry, did you pass?
Yes.
Jumped in. 28B pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, council did convene an executive session to confer matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-13, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the northeastern quadrant of the city, and appropriate motion would be to either approve or deny the economic development project as discussed in executive session.
Make a motion to approve the economic development. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Item 28C pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, council did convene an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-14, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the southeastern quadrant of the city, and appropriate motion would be to either approve or deny the economic development project as discussed in executive session.
Motion to approve economic development project ED-2025-14. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, to approve. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Item 28D pursuant to 307(c)(11) Title 25, council did convene an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project number ED-2025-13, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the northeastern quadrant of the city, and appropriate motion would be to either approve or deny the economic development project as discussed in executive session.
Make a motion to approve economic development project ED-2025-15. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Item 28E pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Polaris Technology, Inc. versus City of Muskogee, case number CV-2025-457, filed in and for the District Court of Muskogee County, Oklahoma, and there is no action required on this item. Item 28F pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim number 10-23-32, and an appropriate motion would be to approve the settlement as discussed in executive session.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve settlement. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Item 28G pursuant to Section 307(b)(1) Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the hiring of a new employee for the Municipal Court of the City of Muskogee, and appropriate motion would be to authorize the hiring of the new employee as discussed in executive session.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 27, please.
Consider approval of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority minutes of regular session August 25, 2025, and regular session October 27, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 27, please.
Consider approval of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority minutes of regular session August 25, 2025, and regular session October 27, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Consider approval of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority minutes of regular session August 25, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 27, please.